...twenty nineteen, I would ask for a trust to take the role.
Trusty Caff.
Here.
Trusty Garcia.
Here.
Trusty Greer.
Here.
Trusty Richardson.
Here.
Trusty Claybrook.
Here.
Mr. President, could we stand for the trusted leader, trusted leader, Trusty Caff?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a home where we live, indivisible, infinite and endless, for all.
I may need to approve corrections of the minutes of the justice board meeting on June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Are there corrections to be made for the minutes? There are no corrections to be made to the minutes of June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the... I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the... The motion is about Trusty Caff approving the minutes, please give a second.
Second.
Second by Trusty Richardson, would you please take the role?
Trusty Caff?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Stay.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Motion passed, thank you. Before we open this session to the public, if you have anything to say to the board, if you would stand up and give us your name, and your reason for addressing the board, then we'd be glad to hear from you. I would ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public. Make a motion to open the meeting to the public. Make a motion by Trusty Claybrook to open the meeting to the public, please give a second. A second by Trusty Garcia, would you please take the role?
Trusty Caff?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, please give a time to the public, that's that.
Andrew Johnson, I would just like to thank Trusty Claybrook and any of the other people that had to do with getting that long-haired sand put out there. I had been asking quite a while, I see it's out there now, so I wanted to thank the people who had a hand in it, in particular, Trusty Claybrook.
Thank you, young man, work much better when he working out.
Absolutely.
They don't want to help on this side, yes sir?
Ed Brock, last meeting, John Caff said that he was going to look into that audit that was foiled from the village by a resident, and I wondered if there's any, is that audit correct or is it not correct, did you check into it?
I, I do have that, do you want me to address that now?
You can just go.
Okay, so the state mandated us to change the type of accounting we use, and the old way was called cash-based basis of accounting, and the revenues are reported on the income statement in the period in which the cash is received from customers. The expenses are reported on the income statement when the cash is paid out. So that's the way we used to do it, and in that timeframe, we switched to the accrual basis of accounting, and that started in two thousand seventeen. It provides a better picture of the company's profits during an accounting period for the following reasons. Revenues are reported on the income statement when they are earned, which often occurs before the cash is received from the customer. Expenses are reported on the income statement in the period when they match up with the related revenues or occur and expire, which is often in a period different from the period when the payment is made. So the accrual basis of accounting also provides a better picture of the company's financial position at the end of the accounting year. The reason is that all assets that are earned are reported and all liabilities that are incurred will be reported on the balance sheet. The accrual basis of the accounting is required because of the matching principle, and that state mandate needs to switch.
Okay, John, I know, this all sounds very good, in layman's terms, I mean, are we really in that much debt? I mean, is it something that...
I think you have to give it one more year, wait till we see the next one.
Okay.
Because they changed the whole way the accounting was done, so.
Okay, but that is, and looking at it from a viewpoint of just somebody who doesn't know much about it, you know, it kind of looks like, like we're in a lot of trouble here, and I just, if you're, you know, what you read there is, that's in layman's terms, I mean, as long as you can say that you don't think the village is in that much trouble as far as finances go.
Not at all. We're not, we're not. Not at all. What was the other thing that was said, it looks at the expenses, there's something different.
I think the, well, I think Mr. Haddock had before when you revealed the, you were saying that, what was saying quite a money, well, that six hundred and some thousand, whatever that figure was, I mean, that, I mean, that was not cash money, that was the value of the property as it was assessed.
It was six million.
Or six million, I mean, that was not, I mean, that was not six million dollars.
It just amazed me how the number difference could be from one audit to another, six million dollars.
But it was too, but I explained it, the whole way them...
John, you spoke like Spanish to me too, I didn't understand it, what I can suggest to you is that, given the last couple... According to the last couple audits, including the twenty-eighteen one, we've used a modified cash basis system. Why, we switched, so we... We didn't switch, it said since fifteen or sixteen you've been using that. No, we switched, we switched.
Seventeen, eighteen, we switched.
We switched. We switched, I read you the difference. It also looks at the money that's owed to us, like outstanding debt that we have is included in there. Now, I, I had asked...
I'm not diminishing the liability once we owe that, and once we enter that into the system, then it brings the value down.
See, I, I asked Trusty Garcia about the total net position for the village. Is that our cash, is that our checkbook balance for Burnham? She said yes, I know she went to you with it because she said she'll get back, and that's fine. If that's the case, if our, if our bankbook balance is what that is, we're six million dollars in debt now. That's why I brought it in front of you, you just say no. We're not.
Not at all.
How much are we in debt then? You guys have to know, what are audits for? I'm just asking on behalf of everybody, why do we have an audit? What does an audit tell Burnham? No mayor, what does it tell Burnham, I'm not arguing with you.
What we're trying to tell you, and you got to explain to me.
What does a six million dollar figure stand for then?
Not in debt, but six million dollars, that's absolutely categorically not true, not true. Now, your interpretation of that, I believe that...
I'm asking you to, to, I mean, what are we in debt though? You, you gave us a surtax because we're in debt, I'm asking why are, how much are we in debt, that's all.
We didn't give you a surtax because we're in debt.
John told us that at the town hall in Burnham school.
No, that was because our lift station has been in the process of crumbling, and eventually we're gonna have to...
That's what we heard from John.
Yeah, that's the sewer tax, right?
No, the sewer tax is one dollar, the surtax is ten bucks from everybody at home.
But that, that's also for sewer, that was, that one dollar's been there for years and years.
Right, I wasn't talking about that, he keeps bringing that up, I'm talking S-U-R-T-A-X. It's written as a surcharge on our bills now, but it's a surtax in the ordinance.
That is for sewer, that's for sewer also.
That's for the use of water and sewer. That's what your ordinance says.
It's for the water, not the use of it.
It says for use of it, for use of the sewer or the water.
It's for the discharge.
Well, that was Ed. My point is, also in the last meeting, Ed had, had asked you to explain the debt, you said, one of the reasons why we have the debt is, several people are freeloaded in the village? He asked you to explain that, you said, somebody else's, next question, next question, I'll talk about it later.
What do you mean freeload?
That's what I'm asking you. I watched it on video and you said it, I don't know what you meant by it, I was curious. Probably meant that people not paying their water bills, possibly.
We have some people that we...
I'm sure there are, but I, I'm just curious, what you had to say though? I'm sure there are freeloaders, and more than just that.
And you're paying, go ahead.
But he just said it himself.
No, he wasn't talking about that, go ahead.
Last meeting, you said a small group of people were playing politics and bringing up old stuff that you can't do anything about, okay? Well, first of all, Mayor, you are a professional politician, all, all, that's my suggestion, I'm, I'm sure you would agree with it, you said you are for thirty years. John Heim? Well, in the first place, me, myself, I'm the most not political person you're gonna get in Burnham. If you remember right, the main reason I came in here, because one lady says, can we fight this? We're gonna fight this, in December seventeen, you said you already lost. I brought it up in a meeting, the first one you...
I don't recall saying that before.
Well, that's what you said when I said it to you too, she started yelling over my shoulder, yes you did, yes you did. Well, like I say, that brought me in here. Well, back then, we knew about the, the rates, the rates going up, but we did not know about the surtax and the debt at that time. And you're suggesting that the debt is old news at this point. Well, we only found about the debt, I found out about it about two months ago. Because I came in and I foiled for the general fund and the water fund, I wonder what the balances then to work, for three different years. What did you do, talk about the politics, I mean, I'm just a resident, asking for the sewer fund, the balances in two funds? You give me audits, you give me three different audits from three different years. So, if that isn't politics, I don't know what it is, I took, okay, I mean, I'm a resident, I'm thinking, how, what do I go from here? You made me pay seventeen and a quarter for them three audits. One of them audits consisted of the six million dollar debt that we currently have, okay? That's what it says. Now, you're arguing against your numbers, you're not arguing with me or anybody else in here. But, my last point here, Mayor, is, if you're a resident, what do you do? I asked John Caff last week, I called him, called him on the phone, what our current debt is, he said he doesn't know. He's the finance chairman of Burnham, okay? I asked Trusty Garcia over there as well, she said she'll get back to me, well, that was last week and I'm still waiting, okay? Trusty Greer and Richardson here, I'm trying to be totally respectful, them two are, are on the finance committee. If anybody would know about the money in our village, it would be the people on the finance committee.
I don't think it really was medical, whatever we give you, you're not gonna believe it anyway.
You haven't, why don't you try it?
I'm telling you unequivocally, the village of Burnham is not six million dollars, that your time is up.
You will shut me up if you give us a number, sir.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
There are no comment, there are no comments, please.
Hi, my name is Kat Olson, and the last time, I can't remember the last time I was here, maybe a month, a month and a half ago, I said, it probably was closer to May because we had hit the year mark when we had the increase. Are we any further as far as getting a loan, getting into, getting these water meters changed out?
Well, we're in the process of, we've changed out some water meters through the other fund that we got. We have not been approved for the loan yet, so we're gonna get some assistance from the, you know, Southsboro Mayor's and managers. I think they can assist us in getting that, so, like I said before, I'm not exactly sure as to why they have not given to us that. It would be my opinion that they feel that we didn't rate, rate high enough, and, and, and we are not gonna make any more adjustments to it, so, that would be my guess, but, but as soon as we get that information...
Have you kind of just washed your hands of trying to get the loan then, or?
No, it's still pending, and we will certainly keep you abreast, and once we get that information, you'll be the first to know. There are no comments, please, no, you go ahead.
I just wanted to mention about the water meters, I just heard recently on the news that Mayor Lightfoot, and they've put in some new meters, I wanted to know if they were the same meters in Chicago, what they're doing is they're raising the lead content in people's homes, and that, so she stopped it, she's put a freeze on doing it, I just wanted to make sure.
That was on today's news.
Yeah, we weren't looking into the same water meter changes.
We've mentioned it several meetings, we've mentioned several times that there's gonna be an issue with that somewhere down the road, and although our general assembly is gonna pass that bill, and once they pass it, it'll probably give us about ten years to change out all, all the lead lines in Burnham, that's gonna be very expensive and probably inaccessible, a million dollars to do that, so, but that has not happened yet, we're not the first, and we were so...
I was just worried about the lead content, if it's the same company that we're dealing with...
Probably not the meter, Jerry probably knows more, it's probably because you're messing with...
That's what they said, the stuff they...
You're messing with the old lead pipes, right?
Well, yeah, it is...
Right. So it's probably, yeah, probably the fact that you're messing with old lead pipes.
And we do the testing.
You shake the lead loose and old lead pipes.
They did say that, that they had to change the pipes some more, because they've been installed for over a hundred years.
And that's what the testing, well, is anybody else on this side?
Yeah.
That's that.
I do, okay, I'm gonna speak, I'm not gonna stand up. My name is Jerry Hunter, and answer your question, you're under exactly right. If I was in Burnham, I would definitely run my own testing of the lead, and I would make sure that you don't have any lead in your water. Because Burnham only goes to three years by mandate, and only twenty homes get tested, not everybody's, and some of those homes have a certain amount. I would not trust the administration here to make sure that your lead levels, your lead levels are where they need to be. I don't think that there's people in this village that understand it, our only superintendent is Harvey, and he's a consultant or something, we hired somebody from another community that knows nothing about Burnham. He's already had four violations in Burnham through one or another different things, and then there's just a couple, a couple part-time, this is true, you can look on the internet, there's just a couple of the part-time people there, well, one of them's full-time, and they don't, they don't really know much about that lead. Every time you change a meter, you're supposed to be aware, you're supposed to go up and down both sides of the street.
But I guess you didn't teach him too well when you was here.
There's a hang on there, I didn't hear what you said, what was that? He said you didn't teach him too well. Hey, I was still speaking before you cut me off. You're supposed to go up and down the streets when there's a water name, and you're supposed to let those residents know. I'll bet you, I'll, I'll bet you the village hasn't even went to one home and told them that they need to be aware that they have a lead line. Burnham also had a big problem with lead back in the day, and we covered all of our pipes, which was also a poison, which eventually they're going to have to wear out.
You destroyed all the records, right, you didn't go to the village.
Number two, I'd like to ask, my friend John here gave me something, said he, he, I told him that I was gonna contact other communities, and found out that because I wanted to find out about taking this summer break, which the village is gonna vote out today. Summer is one of our most busiest times here, but most things happen between now and October. And the village takes a two and a half month hiatus, they all get paid, and they're gone for two and a half months. They don't become, there's no meetings, nothing gets approved, the village or residents don't get a chance, and I checked other communities, Dalton has one meeting in July, actually, John checked it, and they have two every other month, Lansing has one meeting in July, and one meeting in August, and then they go back to their two meetings, and Cal City still has two meetings every month. So the communities around us do not have a summer break, they don't all leave and just get paid for two and a half months. And Burnham, for some reason, vote themselves a two and a half month vacation every year. Can you have, can you have a meeting in August, Mayor?
Do you have a...
Which is gonna happen tonight, all I ask is, why don't a couple of you, John, Travis, have a couple of meetings a month? May I, may I, you guys just, Mayor, you know what, we're gonna vote no. We usually go no tonight. We do have meetings all through that time period. What's that, John? We do, we do have meetings. Not open to us? We do have meetings, we have... The people put you guys in charge. We have special meetings all through this number, but you know what I'm trying to mean. You guys don't commit reports for water, you don't commit reports for public works, so time is up, it's discussed.
Our time is up, thank you. Anybody else got anything over here? Does anybody got anything over here? I'll ask you.
Leonard Christen, Burnham, I worked the fire we had over the cottage park over there. Has anything been investigated on that yet, have you know anything else, something's going on with that? And are we going to repair that area? And I think there's a big, huge metal spikes hanging off the, off of the road, my kids play there three, four times a week. And I've known that a lot of it now, because there's big metal things around, there's been graffiti over there, is there any...
We was over there today, in the public district myself, and Officer Garrett, and another officer, and a pitcher from the public district, and they did move one piece of metal today, that will be removed as soon as possible.
Other than the ones we moved, have there been repaired on that thing, or are we gonna build another?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what decision gonna be made on that yet, but, but to have it, it will be removed, so.
Are we gonna, actually, will there be a camera over there for future references for things like that happening? You know, our children are, that, oh, our area has at least fifty, fifty children in that area that play in that park daily, and, I mean, how much that happens.
We have a water issue there, flooding issue there.
There's, there's a water issue, there's a decent over there, but still, kids still playing in the parking area, parking there, kids still going there and playing.
Yeah, we would like to get that under control, so it will be more accessible to the kids, and we're looking into that as well, as soon as we can do that as well.
Is there any other comment? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
No, please.
Okay.
Annette, look at, in Burnham, I'm just amazed at the gentleman that was speaking with such attitude. There's a, there's a way to make the point, but not have such distaste.
Was I rude?
Oh, yes, you all were, but let me finish, now I'm talking, so it's my time. Each one of these people up here are accessible, our village is...
No, they're not.
I said, I'm, I'm, I said, um, thank you, thank you. Because this is a small community, if we find a problem, let's approach it in a better way. Don't be so strong with, with distaste and dislike, we can do this better. And, and I think you said, right here, gentlemen, the first one, in the third row, fourth row, you're not even in Burnham anymore? Is that what you said? You, did you say you don't live in Burnham anymore? Well, we can do it better, we're, we're, we're small, and this community has come a long way, so stop being so rude and disrespectful.
Thank you.
Randy McPherson, I'm in Anistia, Burnham, I also, the, the door goes both ways. Not only do we have to be respectful, but I think as the mayor and trustees, you guys should also be respectful and not cut off people when they're speaking, make nice comments, because very, very rude. It kind of, it, it, it kind of filters into what our kids bring up, and what they grow up, and what they see, and how they react as a member.
That comes from the White House, but go ahead.
What I'm just exactly saying right here, so, I think as a village, you guys should look into possibly, possibly taking a course called Crucial Conversations that will teach you on how to deal with these high emotional...
That's what the White House, we'll do it.
High, high emotional type of situations, I highly recommend it.
I start in Washington. All right, ma'am. Start in Washington.
I think you should, I think you should all be respectful towards each other.
I'm sorry, can you say your name?
I have a name or...
Your name.
Oh, Elise Alab, I live in Burnham. So, I actually am here because the sidewalk in front of my house is cracked, I have two small children, I'm afraid they're gonna fall and hurt, and...
What's your address?
Twenty-nine, twenty-five.
Jordan Club.
Excuse me, respect.
They don't know where else.
Jordan Club.
You're not even in Burnham anymore, can you please just allow me to speak?
We're not allowed.
Um, so... It doesn't mean that I'm gonna...
Sir, if you continue to talk, I'm gonna have to have you...
I don't care what you do.
Okay? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, also, there's panhandlers, I don't know who they are, but they live in the trailer park, they're coming out to me and various other neighbors every day asking for money. It's gotten to the point where they're knocking on my door, and they're asking for, for money, and... Sir!
Will you take him out of the baby, please? Take him out the baby, please.
Yes, you did.
You keep out, busting him, take him out.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the panhandlers have been coming up and down the street quite a bit.
Take him out the baby.
So we need to figure out what to do.
Where do they live?
In the trailer park. Also, um, the city stickers, you know, there's one you have a park two blocks away from your house, and there's plenty of cars there, that don't have city stickers. And you know, if I have to pay my hundred dollars for my two city stickers, I think we have everybody do the same thing.
Well, we're in the process right now of putting out additional notices for the people who require the stickers, and I believe the police have been working on that on some of the evening shifts, you know, when most of the people go home, so we are trying to do that.
And, and now that we're all talking about finances, is there any way that we can find out who sued the village and how much the village was paid out to, to those law suits?
Yes, absolutely.
I would like that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
What's her address? What's her address?
Twenty-nine, twenty-five, one hundred and thirty-eight.
Okay, go ahead, then, then you did the last one.
I'm sorry, I had my hand up, because, um, my name is Joseph Penny Ross, I just wanted to comment on the, the, uh, verification, and then it goes on every year in addition to all the true terms that they give.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, and, we'll take it out for the comment, and we'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Mayor, can I add something? I noticed in the minutes that your average, she just tricked my trigger here, the average tree cost is, what was it? Twenty, twenty-five to three thousand dollars? And when I had that tree that was split, that I had to have, I asked the village who they used, you know, I know you couldn't recommend, but I used Pekarski. That was a really large tree, and they took it down for like eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars.
And who said it was the, um...
It's in these minutes that the standard cut, cost to cut down a tree is twenty-five to three thousand dollars.
No, the total.
How?
The total.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's not per tree, no, that we have some trees...
To cut down a tree, twenty-five to three thousand dollars.
No, and we have some trees that probably wouldn't qualify for that, but, no.
So this is not the cost we're paying?
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay. Some of them are close to two thousand, so he has...
Yeah, two, two thousand I could see, but I was like, does that ever come up for a bid? Because that's a lot of money.
Yeah, no, I'm, no, I'm pretty stingy, but you're not, so you don't have to... And we all, um, I will ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to close by Trusty Claybrook, please give a second.
A second.
A second by Trusty Greer, please take the role.
Trusty Caff?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, meaning it's not closed to the public. Um, the invested Cook County project is going okay on State Street. It's on the, they have to do a phase one and phase two, and there'll be, I don't think they'll get into repairing the street until next year. But that's gonna be, that's gonna eliminate a lot of, you know, potholes in State Street. It'll be all the way from the Indiana State Line to the Dalton Expressway, that'll be a great thing there, so, probably have to put more policemen out there for the speed, but, but the speed'll be nice, and, um, we had the animal, we had Cook County Animal Control out there the other day, and we had a hundred and seventy participants, you know, people involved in animals and stuff, that was very good. Again, with us working in conjunction with other governments, then we are successful in what we're doing, and we bring those resources here to the village of Burnham that our residents can benefit. So again, you know, it's always our position to do the best job that is that we can for the residents. Now, some people may not agree with us, and that's fine, and, but we will always do our best, and, and if, and if a lot of people love you, I mean, don't focus on the ones who don't, and so, that's, with that being said, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Clark Ruth.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just another reminder, the village stickers are still on sale, they're late, they were due on the windows as of July first. You still need to bring your current registration, we have the registration in order to purchase a sticker, there is now a ten dollar late fee, so the passenger is now at fifty-five, and a truck, a bus truck is seventy-five.
Okay, thank you, Clark Ruth, for that important information. At this time, we would hear from Trusty Greer, Public Education, Health, Safety and Welfare.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming. Burnham Fire and Medical Report, this is for the month of June, twenty nineteen. There were a total of eight halls, there were six, six during the daytime and during night, and for the ambulance, there were thirty-one. They were very busy during this time, there were seventeen during the day and fourteen during the night. I just want to remind everyone that our line dancing has been going on for over two years now. It, we will continue August the third, and it's such a wonderful form of exercise, everyone is welcome. Again, line dancing will resume August the, uh, first Saturday in August. At the community center, and it's, it starts at nine o'clock in nineteen eleven, but normally, sometimes the line dancing goes over to twelve. It's wonderful.
Eight AM, yes.
Yes, eight AM, yes, it's wonderful. And perhaps you may see a demonstration at the Family Day that will happen in August. Um, and, let's see, one other thing, oh, the garage sale. We will have two garage sales during the month of July, the, the first one would be July the thirteenth, and the next one will be July the twentieth. If it rains, we will have a rain day of July the twenty-seventh. The, um, the setup time is seven o'clock, the sale starts at nine. You must bring your own table and setup, it's growing, it's a good way to meet with the people in your community, it's a fun day, and we have lots of vendors that have signed up for it, so, if you would care to join us, please feel free. It's this Saturday, the first one, and, and next Saturday is the next one. Setup time's seven AM, sale starts at nine o'clock, thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Graham, for your support and that information, a couple of words in building, Trusty Claybrook.
Good evening. Good evening. I only have a few things, uh, public work for the last couple of weeks out, um, doing the vacant lots, cutting the grass, and pulling weeds and things, and also grading the alleys, and that's all I have.
I'd like to add to that, Trusty Claybrook, uh, he's been doing some tests on certain alleys, and he's done about, I think about four or five, as far as the potholes. It's always been, my involvement to me, one part of the alley is completely solid, and it got potholed.
It's always been, um, mind-boggling to me, that one part of the alley is completely solid, and it got potholes elsewhere, so, uh, so we've been using, um, some cold patch and gravel together and compressing it. And that's senior, he's working for the group, so, and those alleys, after you get those, we're gonna be testing them, you know, continue to monitor them. And we're gonna make sure that we don't break them, but then, uh, but that's all great, of all, you know, so, we'll have a map, and we'll highlight it.
That tree that I mentioned in Burnham, ever that was taken out by the drunk driver, that was cut down last year. Did you understand, yeah? You did just talk about that, you know what he told me, too. Yeah, I didn't even show the address, the middle of the block, the one that the drunk driver took out a few trees and a fence.
One forty-two, twenty-two, I think. One twenty, one forty-two, twenty. Okay, thank you, trustee Greer. And all that, and all that resolution plan, trustee Garcia?
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash O dash zero zero five. In ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty nineteen, and then April thirty, twenty twenty, for the village of Burnham.
Did you have something to read on that?
No. No.
Do you want to add any discussion, questions on, from the board?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash O dash zero zero five. In ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year, May first, twenty nineteen, to April thirty, twenty twenty, for the village of Burnham.
There's a motion to flow by trustee Garcia to approve ordinance number two nineteen dash O five. And some appropriations that end in April the third, two thousand twenty, so, but we have a second, no, second, second by trustee Cap, for the play take roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
A motion passed, proceed.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash O dash zero zero six. In ordinance establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioner, members of the police department, fire department, and other employees of the village of Burnham.
And, uh, since there are no further comments from the public, then I will explain, so, this says that the, uh, this is increasing the salaries of the, uh, village officials, so there's some small increases in there for the police department, couple work department, and others. Now, according to the state statute, according to the state statute, I mean, elected officials cannot increase their salary during the term that they're in office. And so, I don't want anybody to leave him confused. So, you cannot increase your salary during the term you're in office, so you have to, if you get real active, then that would be the salary. If not, if somebody else ran against you, then if they won, then that would be their salary.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash O dash zero zero six. Establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioner, members of the police department, fire department, and other employees of the village of Burnham.
I'll second it. Okay, with the play take roll, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
A motion passed, proceed, trustee.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the payment to Huff and Huff in the amount of five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine and eighty-four cents. Accomplishing a wetland survey in preparation of a wetland delineation report with regards to determining the preferred corridor of the Burnham Greenway within the village of Burnham. The village of Burnham entered into an intergovernmental agreement with IDNR September of twenty eighteen, under which IDNR agreed to reimburse the village of Burnham in an amount not to exceed six thousand two hundred and fifty.
Right, so we will make this payment to the IDNR, and the village of Burnham will be reimbursed back for this, so, um, so we will get that. I mean, we'll get it back.
Give you, ma'am. I did have that letter, that, I supposed to read that. I had the letter that explained that, by the way.
Explained that? Are you still gonna?
No, that's, you just mentioned.
Okay, okay, I'll proceed, trustee.
To make a motion to approve payment to Huff and Huff in the amount of five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine and eighty-four cents for accomplishing the wetland survey in preparation of a wetland delineation report. With regards to determining the preferred corridor of the Burnham Greenway within the village limits of Burnham. The village of Burnham entered into an intergovernmental agreement with IDNR in September of twenty eighteen, under which IDNR agreed to reimburse the village of Burnham in an amount not to exceed two thousand, six hundred, two thousand and fifty.
Okay, so you made.
Six thousand two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, thank you. We know. Um, a motion to flow by trustee Garcia.
I'll second it.
To approve this, the Huff and Huff will be the second, and second by trustee Cap, for the play take roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed. Do you have anything else, trustee Garcia?
Uh, just one more thing, um, we're hosting another job fair here in the village of Burnham. Um, so, I, I have some flyers, if anyone's interested, if you know anyone that's looking for work, please give them this, they're gonna be interviewing on site, this is for a steel company. That's located like on Ninety-third and Woodland, so it's not too far from here, good wages, good benefits, so please send everyone, this is gonna be partly the fourth job fair.
Yeah, four.
Yeah, the fourth job fair, and we've had a really good turnout for all of them, so please send people, so we have another good turnout.
And we've had several people that have been hired here from the village of Burnham, and of course, that is, uh, you know, top broad environment that we can, uh, you know, help our people, but it's not just limited to the village of Burnham, but, um.
It's for everyone.
For everyone, but we certainly propose, uh, proposing our people.
And the companies are very grateful that we're able to use the community center for this, and it's good for the village also.
Okay, thank you, trustee Garcia, for that, for the information. Uh, finance, trustee Cap.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of the village's monthly bills and outstanding unpaid bills after approval by the finance committee. When funds are available until Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, we raise a meeting of the board of trustees.
A motion to flow by trustee Cap to approve the bill until September twenty-fourth, second by trustee Claybrook?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes, a motion passed, now, we don't have another, I mean, regular meeting schedule, there's a good possibility that we have to have a special meeting, so we've got a couple things pending, and we did not get a chance to address, so, there's a good possibility, so. I mean, for that special meeting, it will be, it will be posted just like this meeting, and, um, so you would be aware of it, so, a good possibility, but then, then the next two or three weeks or months, so, that can happen.
Um, public utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to adopt or not adopt the water supply agreement between the city of Chicago, Illinois, and village of Burnham, Illinois. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the, uh, agreement between the city of Chicago, Illinois, and the village of Burnham.
Just hold up, okay. We need a second.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Richardson made a motion, so we need a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Greer, for the play take roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. Anything else, trustee Richardson? Do you want to say anything about your need to make? Okay, back to you.
I have park recreation, trustee Ballen's not here, so, like we said earlier, we did make an assessment of the cottage park today, and we certainly don't want, you know, any, uh, children of our property to be injured. And, uh, we also, we're gonna get a new swing set, so we have a top lot at a hundred and thirty-nine in Hottick, so hoping that'll be in the next four to six weeks. And also this morning, I was at Blackburn Park, um, and the board had blew off, or either somebody had pulled it off, off the, um, um, off the, uh. Off the gazebo there, and, uh, not the gazebo, but, um, but anyway, they had pulled the board off, and it had about, I said about seven, eight nails in it, it was turned up. And I'm thinking, why would somebody do this in a park, you know, we don't get planned here, but, it's a possibility they could fall on it, they could step on it, you know, so I flipped it over, and I told the park district that, um, that that need to be addressed, so I will follow it. Tomorrow, I will follow that up to make sure that they take care of that, if somebody wants to back up again.
Uh, okay.